Good evening, everyone. This is Mary Ellen McKay, Chair of the City of Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the January 25th, 2022 zoning board meeting. Welcome. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third-floor auditorium of Nashua City Hall, 229 Main Street, and via Zoom at the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as audio and video recordings, will be available later at NashuaNH.gov/AgendaCenter for select zoning board of adjustment. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the meeting, and to the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the Board. Next persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for five minutes, or up to five minutes. If there are questions or opposition or concerns -- oh, no, I'm sorry. Finally, one and only one person with questions or an opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. A light timer is used to manage speaking time. It will change from green to yellow when one minute is left and change to red when the speaker's time has expired. If you are participating by Zoom and wish to speak when public input is requested, please use the raise hand option, which can be found under reactions on a computer or the more menu on a phone. The Chair will call you in turn. Please use the lower hand option when done. Please mute your microphone until called to speak. Note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and/or variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. Variants also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. For the City of Nashua, bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is in error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. For this meeting, we have the following full Board members in attendance. Excuse me. We have Mr. Rob Shaw. We have Mr. J.P. Boucher. We have -- Mr. Jack Currier is our clerk. Mr. Steve Lionell is our Vice Chair, and I am Mary Ellen McKay, your Chair. We also have the following alternate members in attendance, Mr. Jay Mincara, and we have Mrs. Safia Boras on Zoom. And Ms. Boras, are you in the room alone? Can you let us know?
Yes, I actually am in the room alone.
And you are not present in person?
I am not present in person due to traveling.
Thank you. In addition to the Board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk, the Deputy Planning Manager; Ms. Kate Poirier, our zoning coordinator. And I mentioned everyone who was here by name, but I did not have them acknowledge their presence in their own voice. So if you will, please acknowledge your presence in your own voice, and I will start with Mr. Steve Lionell, our Vice Chair.
I'm present.
Mr. Jack Currier, our clerk.
Jack Currier is present.
Mr. J.P. Boucher.
Present.
Mr. Rob Shaw.
Present.
And Mr. Jay Mincara.
Present.
And Mary Ellen McKay is also present, and I apologize to the Board, I would never take away your voice, not intentionally. Let us start the meeting, and we just took a roll call attendance for Board members participating by Zoom, which we did acknowledge with Ms. Boras. Alternates may fully participate in discussions, but will vote only if a full Board member recuses themselves, or if there are fewer than five Board members in attendance. For tonight's meeting, we have all five Board members, and we have one alternate. And I will now read the first case into --
Two alternates. We have two alternates, Mr. McCarr and Ms. Boras.
Oh, Ms. Boras. I apologize, Safia.
Ask for changing agenda.
Is there any change to the agenda?
No, there is not, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Falk. And Mr. Falk, I should let you and Ms. Poirier acknowledge your presence with your voice also.
Carter Falk, present.
Kate Poirier, present.
Thank you. Case number one. Owner: BAE Systems Information and Electronic Systems Integration. Norman Kuto, owner, 65 Spitbrook Road, Sheet A, Lot 12, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-115 to work in another wetland buffer to convert an existing paved parking area to construct a 1,350-square-foot, single-story electrical equipment building. It is in the PI and RC zones in Ward 7. Is there somebody here to present this case?
Yes, Brett Weigle from Halum ICS.
Excuse me?
Brett Weigle from Halum ICS.
Thank you. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you.
And can you state your name and your address for the record?
Yes, my name is Brett Weigle, Senior Project Manager with Halum ICS in South Burlington, Vermont, submitting this application on behalf of BAE Systems at 65 Spitbrook Road in Nashua, New Hampshire. I have with me a consultant team, Anthony Mento from SNP Architects, and Terry Heiss from McCarlin Johnson, and the civil engineer. And I could provide an overall sort of description of what the project intent is, and then we can also describe --
Excuse me. Mr. Weigle, could you speak up just a tad, please, so we can hear you?
Sure. Yeah, sorry about the audio problems, but thank you for hosting this electronically. It certainly makes it easier for all of us. Yes, I can provide an overall description of the project and our understanding of why we had to submit to the zoning board of adjustment, and then our civil engineer and our architect can explain or answer questions in detail about what the project entails. So overall, I see someone queued up on the screen, the plot plan, or at least a portion of the view. If you wouldn't mind zooming out, at least for me, it only seems to be a partial view. Wait, I'm not sure what happened there. Were we submitted? I guess someone scanned this as two pieces. That's not ideal. Essentially, what this is, is this is work at the back of BAE's building known as the MECC, which is part of the campus at 65 Spitbrook Road. And what it is, let's see here, I'm not actually familiar with these documents, which I don't think were part of our application. Well, okay, here's a wetlands report. I think it was forwarded from the Conservation Commission. I know our application to the zoning board of adjustment consisted of a one-page, eight-and-a-half-by-eleven plot plan, as well as a three-page form application, which I'm not seeing here, but I'm partially seeing a plot plan, I think. At any rate, our work is at the back of the building, of what's called the MECC. We tried to put new electrical infrastructure inside the existing building, but due to space constraints, code issues, we're not able to do so. So what we're doing is we're putting a new building dedicated for electrical infrastructure at the exterior of the existing building. We're also putting in, you could call it an emergency generator, basically a backup generator for the electrical power requirements of some upgrades inside the existing building. And the reason we're here today is, and this was understood, I think, even before we had the application submitted to the Conservation Commission, is that this new electrical building, which would exist, actually, you can see a portion of it there, it impinges slightly on existing wetlands, and we knew this was going to be the case. And what we've done in our design work, in our layout work, is we've sized and located this new building on existing parking area, existing pervious paved area. And so we really have no impingement on greenfield wetland areas. We went through, of course, the wetlands application, and with that, a wetland study, you know, just to delineate where is the wetland, where is the buffer, what is vegetation within that wetland area? And quantified our application to both the Conservation Commission and now the zoning board of adjustment, the actual square footage of how much we're overlapping with the wetland buffer. But incidentally, all of that overlap is already on parking lot area at the back of the building. So we did our best in that regard to minimize the impacts with the wetlands. And we could describe more about the building, we could describe more about the site with our civil engineer architect. It may even be better if we could share our screens to do so. I don't know if we're able to do that in this format.
You should be able to now.
Okay. Actually, if you don't mind, I want to just share my screen, just to clear up what it was we were trying to show with the plot plan there. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, we can see that.
Excellent, thank you. So the existing building I was describing is here. This is the MECC, and this is this new building for electrical gear here, and this is where we're actually impinging on the wetlands, where the wetlands buffer, and the amount or the area is shown right here with this overlap region. I mentioned a new generator located over here, which doesn't really come into play with the wetlands, but it was part of the application, it's part of this overall site plan. We also have some electrical work that will go on underground to interconnect these various pieces of infrastructure, and also to the main building, and some switches outside the main building. But I think the reason we're here is because of the wetlands, and this is really an overall view of kind of what's going on there. Are there any questions about the overall arrangement or the project intent?
Does anyone on the Board have any questions? Mr. Currier.
I was just curious. Tonight, you know, you're mentioning about the generator. I could certainly see why you want that in a separate building. The application was talking about, you know, electrical equipment. I was just kind of curious why it needed to be in a separate building. Was there a lot of noise or a lot of heat or something? I was just curious about that.
Sure. Is the question about separation between the electrical building and the generator, those two elements?
He wants to know if you wanted to know about why there was a separation between the generator and the electrical building?
Oh, yes.
Oh, no, no, just why the electrical equipment needs to be in a separate building.
Yes. When we started this design project, we were tasked with putting everything inside this existing building here at BAE called the MECC. And there's really very little square footage. There was square footage allocated to the design team to do so, but there's, excuse me, a high degree of rework of existing utility systems inside that building to make it possible to effectively create the volume of space required, both in plan and in height, and then also to create the separation for the building code of basically a fire resistance rating of, was essentially an energy storage system with electrical gear and the building proper. So we really didn't have the room to do it, and we didn't have the ability to shut down all the piping systems and all electrical systems inside the building to actually create the volume of space required for it. So we started there because that was the preferred choice, was do everything inside the existing building, but the physical constraints of doing that just didn't allow us to make it fit. So we're trying to do this as simply and as small as possible, and what that is in this case is a long, slender building that fits in a parking area here.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Member of the Board? Thank you, Mr. Weigle. You may continue.
Okay. As I mentioned, there's a generator over here, and I don't know if there's much concern about that, because it's not really affecting the wetlands at all. Essentially, what that is, is a packaged generator system, which is typical of a lot of what you would find in facilities of this nature. It'd be packaged for keeping all the electrical gear associated with this and the prime mover in one enclosure with sound attenuation to minimize any noise impacts on adjoining properties. Are there any questions about the building? I do have the architect here. We could show more details about the building itself in terms of its appearance or its construction.
The Board has no questions, Mr. Weigle.
Should I stop sharing my screen?
Have you completed the testimony that you want the Board to hear?
Well...
You certainly still have time. It's your prerogative, sir.
Sure, sure. Let me just review through the few items mentioned in the application. Essentially, a quantification of the size of the building that we saw in the plot plan, and, you know, speaking to parking spaces. It seems like a lot of the concerns brought to this Board, you know, deal with parking and traffic, and this is sort of an interesting project in that it's not adding parking, it's removing parking, and there's no additional traffic impacts associated with this infrastructure because it doesn't change the number of employees. It's not a trip a tractor or generator in any transportation sense. Really, it's just an inert building that has some impact on the wetlands. And just mentioned, of course, in order to come here, we had to pass through the approval of the Conservation Commission, and in that process, they actually walked the site with us, so not only were they doing their application and our wetlands report, but also seeing for themselves what the condition is here, and, you know, what it would be, of course, if we developed this portion of the parking lot. And they were quite receptive to what we were trying to do and what the overall impact would be, and we had some discussion about the building itself, but, you know, I think there was agreement around everyone that this is the least-impact way to provide this infrastructure for BAE.
Thank you. And Mr. Weigle, are you aware of the wetland special conditions?
Not by that title, special conditions, unless our civil engineer knows what was being referred to.
There's nine conditions that go with the application that need to have your ascent, as it were. Do you need them to be read to you?
Is this related to stipulations of approval from the Conservation Commission?
Excuse me? I'm...
He's asking about the stipulations from the ConCom.
No. No, 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 that's not the ConComs. That's not from the Conservation Commission. This is actually attached to the application for a variance on, or I should say, a special exception for a wetland.
Okay. If it's available, I would appreciate being notified of the nine conditions.
So I think they did fill this out for the ConCom, and maybe that's our confusion with what he's asking.
Oh.
So in the ConCom materials that were supplied to us, there are the special exception criteria that they did fill out, the nine items. It's on page five of six, I think it is, in the form that was submitted. It's included in our paper. So I would say it appears, yes, that they did address all of this already.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to my attention, Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle. They have been agreed to. We are, as a Board, in receipt of the letter from the Conservation Commission as well.
Thank you.
Is there any questions before I ask if there's any support from anybody here? No questions from the Board. Is there anyone here present who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing nothing. And as I stated, we are in receipt of the letter of the Conservation Commission. Does that need to be read into the record? Or can we just agree that it's going to be part of the minutes and the package, and that the Conservation Commission supported this application?
The latter, put it that way. Now, you can state that you have the ConCom's letter of approval, and that it'll be included within the permanent record. And that there were no stipulations.
No, there are no stipulations on this letter, other than coming to this particular Board. So there is the letter, it will be on record, and it is in approval. Is there anyone here present who would like to speak with comments, questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak with comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? I don't see any. Then I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Lionell, would you like to lead us off?
Sure. I'm in support of the application. They've met all of the requirements and have a positive recommendation from the ConCom, so I would support this.
Thank you. Mr. Currier, sir.
As Mr. Lionell said, I think the application I just want to throw in was pretty clear and detailed. Really, all my questions were answered in the written application itself, and I'm good to go with it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boucher.
I'm also going to support the application for the reasons already spoken to.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Shaw.
Similarly, I'm in support, and I just want to note also, I think it's, in this case, especially where there's no change in the impervious surface with the basically parking lot being replaced by the building, that makes it much, I think, easier to see this as very limited impact overall.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mincara.
I agree, and I support the application for the reasons stated.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay. I too support the application.
That's correct.
Oh, I apologize. Safia, Ms. Boras, on the phone, on Zoom.
Hi, I also support the application for all the reasons stated, my colleagues.
Thank you very much. Seeing as the Board seems to be completely in agreement with this, would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of BAE Systems Information and Electronic Systems Integration. Attention, Norman Koto. This is at 65 Spitbrook Road, Sheet A, Lot 12, and the request is for a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-115 to work in another wetland buffer to convert an existing paved parking area to construct a 1,350-square-foot, single-story electrical equipment building. This is in the PI and RC zones. The special exception is listed in the table of uses, as just noted in the description. There will be no creation of undue traffic congestion or impairing pedestrian safety. Will not overload public water, drainage, sewer, or other municipal systems. The special regulations are fulfilled, the nine wetlands special conditions criteria, as was in the written application. And it will not impair the integrity, be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to the health, morals, and welfare of the residents. And for these reasons, I move to approve this special exception.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher, for your second. Mr. Lionell, excuse me.
Mr. Boucher reminded me, and I think we kind of noted it in our discussion, but that it does also want to just explicitly note in the motion that we are in receipt of the ConCom's letter dated January 4th, that's approving this with no stipulation.
Thank you very much. Good to catch you, Mr. Boucher. Mr. Lionell, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Lionell is in favor.
Mr. Currier, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Currier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. That is five to nothing. That is a unanimous vote, Mr. Weigle. The Board has granted your application. Congratulations. And if you have any comments, questions, concerns, please re-refer back to Mr. Falk, and please remember that any decision by this Board can be, within 30 days, challenged. But other than that, good luck.
Yes, thank you for having us on the agenda. Thank you for your time and attention, and thank you for your explanations.
Thank you. And I will now read case number two into the record. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name. Shuran Chen, owner, 10 Worcester Street, Sheet 35, Lot 79, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for minimum land area, 2,985 square feet existing, 6,970 square feet required to convert a single-family house into a two-family house. This is in the RC Zone Ward 4. Is there somebody present to present this application? Please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Shuran Chen. My house...
You please speak into the microphone, because there's...
Just lift it up, if you want.
Or can, yeah, lift it up?
Lift it up. Oh, yeah. My name is Shuran Chen. My house is located at 10 Worcester Street, Nashua. My request is to convert my single-family house into two-family property. A conversion project could not cause any problems to the neighborhood. The work is totally inside the house. There is no architecture or structural change. This house has two entrances and two driveways. All of the neighbors' houses around this house are two or three family properties. This house is 84 years old. The electricity, plumbing, and heating system are aging. The conversion will upgrade the system to current code. The house will be safer, healthier, and more energy-saving. There is no architecture or structural change. Ninety-nine percent of the work is to upgrade electricity, plumbing, and heating system. This house has living size, 2,600 square feet. This size is good to be divided into two families. I like to live in this house due to the convenient location. I also... I also hope to rent a part of this house. If renting the whole house, it is difficult to find one family to rent with fair market price because it is big. And for, for myself, I don't have the capability to handle renting. I contacted property managers. They all require to have the house upgraded. So, upgrading and converting the house into two-family house is the only suitable and affordable option to me.
Thank you. We have your application with a little difficulty here. If, in response to any questions that may or may not be asked, could you please pull the microphone either out of its holder and closer to you so that we can hear you, or leaning closer, or lift it up?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Because it's doubly hard to hear, too, with masks, so we, we have that to contend with. Thank you, Mr. Falk.
I also, I also think the audio in the auditorium tonight is off. For some reason, it's low.
It's, it's very low, where I'm going down.
No, it's very low.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, loud. Okay. Okay.
Seems anything coming over the speakers is coming in very softly.
It is coming in very softly, and we don't, we really do want to pay attention. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Courier, and I think I saw Mr. Minkara.
Yeah, a question on the parking. When I did a site walk on your property, there's two driveways, as you say. The one on Worcester Street, there are two cars in it when I was there. I don't see any room for a third car. I'm just saying, your application says each driveway can hold two to three cars, and I, I just wanted to be clear about the quantity of cars. I saw two cars in the Worcester Street driveway. The second car was pretty much almost already on the sidewalk. So, could you clarify for me on the Worcester Street driveway, how many cars that accommodates?
The, the driveway on the Worcester Street can hold two cars.
Two cars.
So, the other driveway on the dri- driveway hold two cars and also have a garage for one car.
So, I guess on the other street, and I'm drawing a blank on the name.
White.
White, thank you.
Yeah, white, white.
What I saw was one car in the driveway, and that was it. There was, there wasn't room for another. So, are you saying, how many did you say can go on the White Street driveway?
White Street supposed to be three because two car is close to the, is the car, not, not the truck. If the car is close to the garage door, it can hold two cars and also have a room in the garage.
Well, I guess I, I also had a question because when I went by, there was a truck parked on the grass on the corner.
Oh, okay.
And I found that quite dangerous. In fact, I, I, I had trouble pulling out from White Street onto Worcester because the truck was parked on the corner. In, in our city, I think most have a code for how far back the driveway has to be from an intersection. And the purpose of that is so that there aren't vehicles that are parked that are blocking the view. And I have to say, I guess I was surprised to see the pickup truck on the corner because it was covering like two sidewalks and blocking the view. And to me, that was ju- just a surprise and shouldn't be happening. And I'm wondering, is that, do you call that a parking space? Do, does your tenant normally park there? Is that an aberration, or what?
No, no. That place, so, so that guy do some plowing snow. So, some, he open, sometimes park there in case it's snowing. He can, don't bother to move car. Because all the driveway is back and, uh, front and back, not parallel. It's serial parking. So, if just for, for some emergency, he park there. Because he, on the snow day, he has to go out for plowing, to plowing snow. So, I, I will ask, remove that, but the parking is not include that one. That's just a corner.
Okay.
That's not parking.
Yeah. I think I'm all set for now.
Thank you, Mr. Courier. Mr. Minkara?
Just to ask Carter to clarify, if you could, what's the parking requirement per unit?
Two per unit.
Thank you.
So, for two family, they need four spaces.
Thank you.
And also, Mr. Carter, if you could clarify, is parking on a sidewalk or a lawn considered allowable, permissible?
No. Now, sidewalks are for pedestrians to walk and traverse through properties. And you're not supposed to park in their lawn either.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
Just, just a clarification on the White Street side. Is, is the tenant that's using that driveway have use of the garage? I prob, maybe I didn't hear. Is a garage, right?
Yeah, yeah. That's a garage.
Will the tenant be able to use the garage? Is that, is that something for the tenant, or not?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
They use the garage.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant from the board? There's no further questions. Thank you very much for presenting your application. I'm going to ask now, is there somebody here who would like to speak in support of the application? Seeing none, I will ask if there's anybody on Zoom who would like to speak in support of the application? Seeing none, I will ask if there's anybody who would like to speak with any comments, questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Nobody here. On Zoom, is there anybody who would like to speak with any questions, comments, or concerns about this application?
I see a hand raised.
Do you have a hand raised?
Yes.
From?
Brian Guidi.
I, we have a hand raised. Is that?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Could you please state your name and your address for the record?
Yes, my name is Brian Guidi. I'm with my, my wife Lisa Guidi on Zoom. We live at 7 Worcester Street here in the city.
Thank you. Do we have? I think we have something here from you, sir. Did you, yes?
Yes.
Okay, then, since you're here, I mean, do you want to speak about what it is that you sent to the board? And was the applicant given a copy of this? Did she see this?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Kate, do we have a copy to give to her? I mean, I can give her an extra copy I have here. Okay. Mr. Minkara is given. I have an extra copy if you want one, Mr. Minkara. Do you need one?
I'm good. I read it before.
Okay. All right, Ms... Mr. Guidi, um... Would you like to state your comments, sir?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Um, it's soft, but we're, we're listening. So, if you could speak as loud as you can speak or close to your mic, we'll be very appreciative.
Okay. So, I just wanted to address the, the root of the request is to convert the home to a two-family home. And I, I don't have an issue with that. I certainly would encourage anybody that wants to improve their, their property to do so. My bigger concern is with the current use of the property. I've been living at this address with my wife here for, she's been here for 35 years. I've been here for about 30 years. And it has been a rooming house for many years. There is one tenant who is a regular tenant who's been there for a few years. The rest of the tenants are kind of a revolving door of, of tenants. But I think it's, it's a little dishonest to, for the applicant to indicate that this is her residence. And based on our observations, she does not live at this residence. And it is a rooming home. I reported my concerns to Kyle Metcalf of the Enforcement Committee, and he agreed. He talked to, I believe he spoke to one of the tenants when he came out to visit and was able to confirm that. And also had a difficult time getting ahold of the, the owner, which, you know, in an emergency, that, that could be problematic. So, I, I'm requesting that the board, you know, look at the current use of the property before approving any applicants, or any applications to, to convert or allow for a variance to the property.
Thank you. Ms. Chen, do you want to?
Questions? Questions?
Oops, I apologize.
She doesn't get to talk until after everybody has done their comments, and then she has her five minutes.
So, but, okay, if there's...
Questions from the board. For, for the commenter.
Oh. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Guidi on the phone, on the Zoom? Mr. Courier?
Yeah, Mr. Guidi, interestingly enough, in your concerns that you provided us, there's a picture of, I think it's the same truck I saw parked on the corner. Would, I didn't know if, if you found that to be a hindrance to the sight of, line of sight. And I'm wondering, how often do you see a vehicle parked there?
Every day.
Every day?
Every day, yep. And, and due to the lack of parking spaces relative to the number of tenants in the building, there is frequently parking on both sides of the street in front of 7 Worcester Street and 10 Worcester Street. And oftentimes, there have been trucks at the corner of White Avenue, Worcester Street that have had to honk their horn loudly to be able to make that corner. And I, I question whether or not, in a situation like that, whether or not emergency vehicles could, could make it down the roadway.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does anyone else from the board have any questions for Mr. Guidi?
Can I explain?
Just a minute, Ms. Chen. Ms. Boris, do you have any questions?
I've actually recused myself from this case.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Ms. Boris has recused herself from this case. Well, is there anyone else on Zoom who has any other comments, questions, or concerns about this case? I don't see any. Okay. Ms. Chen, you are going to have five minutes to respond to the comments that you have heard and the document that we provided you with.
Okay. So, the guy held a truck on the corner. He bought that truck last year, last summer. But he, after he bought the car, the truck, the truck was not working. So, he has to keep his car. So, then he repair. And I don't know why he bought another car. So, he has three car, so one in the garage. So, finally, I talked to him a few times. Finally, he sell the other car. So, so far, he has two cars. So, he always, he repaired the truck. So, he always used the truck. So, I think maybe the reason he parked the car there so that's easier for him to move. So, I, I will talk to him to park on the driveway. Yeah. So, that's, the other thing is the, it's called renting. How to say? It's the rooms. That's the reason I want to convert to two-family. Because we're really difficult to find one family to rent the house. I used to live there for many years. I, we bought the house, we moved in. So, then, after a few years, my husband passed away. So, on me and my fam, my mom. So, at that time, it's, I feel, I, I, I don't want to stay there alone. So, I rent the first floor to, to a couple to share, to share the, the house, not two-family. So, so that couple, because I, I don't want to live alone, only with my mom. So, we moved out around 2017. But I often come, come back. We have rooms. We still have leave rooms for ourselves. We don't rent all the room. We still have rooms. So, that's the big problem. So, people always have companies sometimes, and they often have argument. So, I really wanted to, last year, I tried to sell, but the tenant didn't want to move out because they told me they couldn't afford the housing. At that pandemic time. So, I prom, I told them I can keep until this year to help them to survive the, at the time, pandemic time. But it's, so far, I think it's time I want to convert. I really want to convert to family. I don't want to handle with multiple people, to help people. And I really want to live there. Now, I'm living in the place is not, is still remodeling. Me and my son, my son together with me because I'm really be afraid to be there alone. So, that I hope convert this to two-family. So, I can live in one family. I can rent one. Or in, even I don't live there, I can have two, two hu, two family to rent. So far, it's really difficult to find one, one family. I tried, I tried, so I couldn't get a fair market price. And if I live there, no family want to live with me. So, that's the reason I is two families. I have, I can rent the, the house to stable, loving families, not in, handle with individuals.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. It's, the hardship is under, understood. However, the response to the comments were that is, as I think I heard you correctly, the truck that parked there is from 12 Worcester, not 10. And the, you want to make this a two-family because of all the comings and goings of all the different people, it would just be easier to have a two-family. Is that basically what you're saying, or you're stating to the board?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
And I have to pay all the utilities.
I just need to clarify because of the, the audio tonight is really bad. Are there any other questions? Okay. I saw both your hands go up at the same time. Mr. Lionell, go ahead.
Okay. Ms. Chen, now, you have, you are currently renting the house to how many tenants?
Uh, four.
Four tenants?
Four room, yeah. It's totally six rooms, so I keep two for myself.
Okay. So, you do not, in fact, live... So you do not in fact live at this house?
Yeah, me, my family, me only.
Not, not that you own it, but where do you, where do you live?
Where, now, I live in Westford.
Sorry, into where?
Westford, Massachusetts. But that's temporarily, that's, that's house is under, under construction. I lived there quite long because the pandemic, I don't want to, I want, I want, hope to stay there for a while. After pandemic, I moved back. But I have room here because I, I hope my son to live in this property.
Okay, so just to be clear, you said that you, you are currently renting rooms in the house to four tenants?
Yeah, right now, for four. Right now, but sometimes it's only-
Somewhere else.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
And you live somewhere else?
Yeah, we live somewhere else, but we have room in this house. We leave the room, so some, before, we often stay here overnight. But now, after pandemic, we, we didn't stay here.
Thank you.
So last year, almost half year, more than half year, only three people. Because they, everybody worried, so I keep only three people. And the rent is just between five, five hundred to six hundred. And I have to power all the utilities. So that's my hardship.
Thank you.
Once in a while, would you okay, once in a while?
We need to speak into the microphone, please.
You'll need to speak in the microphone. If you're going to speak, you also need to state your name and your address.
Okay, okay. My name's Yuxian Zheng, and I'm the son of Shuran Chen. And I currently live with my mother at Westford, which is, which is a town in Massachusetts, which is not even here, in this state.
Okay, so you live in Medford, Massachusetts?
Westford.
Westford.
Right, yeah. And we currently have four tenants living in our house at Worcester. And we do, okay, we do sometimes come back to Worcester to collect rent, or if there's any problems, you know, say for example, somebody, for example, the light doesn't work, or the refrigerator doesn't work, you know, something like that.
We, we understand that. We just wanted to get some clarification on the address, the number of tenants in the home-
Yeah.
And what exactly the desire is. And now, I'm going to let Mr. Shaw ask his question. Mr. Shaw?
I just wanted to also check with you then, as far as, you know, this whole issue about the truck and the space being, or that area of the yard on the corner being used for parking. Would you have any issue with us adding some sort of stipulation possibly if we are in favor of your application? I'm inclined to at least explicitly state that there would be no more parking usage of that corner of the lawn area. And perhaps even if you're open to the idea, I think if some sort of barrier, and I don't know, it could be, you know, just a couple small rocks, it could be some plantings, it could be, you know, decorative, you know, low decorative fence, something that would be simple but would basically keep parking from occurring in that area. Do you have any issue with that type of, first, can you commit that you will not allow parking there, and then possibly putting just some sort of minimal barrier to essentially keep people from being able to park there?
I, I will ask this guy move the car to the driveway, because we have, we have the space for that truck. But he has two, two cars, but he, he, he didn't want to, he, he parked that car there because he want to move frequently. I will ask him parked in driveway, definitely.
All right, thank you.
When we rent-
Back to the mic, please.
Hi, I, I just want to say that when we rent the, the house to the guy who owns the truck, we thought he's just going to have one car, but turns out, he's a, he's a, he's a car fan, you know? And he has like four cars right now. So the, the truck, I mean, we don't, we didn't predict that before. But turns out, he, turns out, he been using too many parking spaces.
Yeah, well, I, I don't have the capability for, to handle writing on people, so I really want to find property manager. So I contact several property managers. They all asked me to have the house upgraded. They gave me the suggestion to convert to two-family, because he told me for one family is big, so the rental will be really high for the fair market price. So I convert to two-family, so I will just rent the house to stable, living families, not handle individuals. So far, I, it's, I couldn't handle, and I've tried to find property manager, and property manager didn't want to take over. He, he told me I have to upgrade the house, because they want to, they don't want to handle this old house, everything aging. So that's the opportunity. I remodel the house and also convert to two-family. That's really helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Are there, Mr. Carrier?
Actually, I have a question for the son, if, and it's a follow-up to Mr. Shaw's question. And my question is, if this Board were to stipulate that there was no parking on the corner, if this Board were to do that in an approval, we don't know what will happen. But that would, would show up in a letter, provided to you, and for example, like perhaps the neighbor, Mr. Guida, would also have a copy of that and would be well aware from participating in this meeting, that there's a stipulation that there's no parking in the corner. So if, you know, a few days later, say, he wakes up in the morning and sees a pickup truck in the corner, he calls the police and the police come down and ticket it. So there'll be enforcement there, there, there's teeth in that stipulation. And I just wanted to ask you if, if you're kind of understanding that, and that's why Mr. Shaw was recommending to perhaps maybe fence that off if, if a stipulation were made, because it would just kind of, you know, help the stipulation, you know, take hold. And I, I guess I don't need an answer, I guess I was just looking to see if there was an understanding of the importance of a stipulation if this Board were to have that.
Yes, yes, we, we understand. Before, I didn't realize, I just thought, because that's in the property, I thought they can park there.
Yeah.
So, but I really asked them to move because I feel too dangerous to the house. So that's, that's the reason I asked him to move the car. But he liked to, I think he liked to park there because he don't have to move. And he has multiple cars.
Right, and I guess one other question to follow up on what Mr. Boucher said about, he, he had asked, and you had affirmed, that the garage is available for the tenants to park in.
Yes, yes, definitely.
So what that would mean, when you're saying that, is that there's no, no storage, no junk in the garage? That garage door works, it goes up, and so that people, your tenant can use it to park there when the snow comes or the rain comes, or, or whatever, it's, it's there for parking and not for storage. And I just wanted to clarify if that's, if that's what you're testing to.
Yeah, yeah, I will, I will check, because I, we removed everything before he has multiple cars. So I removed all, I threw away all the trash in the garage.
Yeah.
So he parked his car there, so finally, he sell. I don't know, I will check if he put other stuff there, I will ask him to move out. Yeah, but I don't have, I don't have anything there. It's empty, the garage is empty for them to, to park.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing as there's no other questions, I'm going to-
No, no. Mr. Guidi gets the chance.
Oh.
Five minutes.
Mr. Guidi, you have five minutes, sir, to respond to the comments and the questions, and in rebuttal. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I definitely understand Mrs. Chen's situation, and I understand that the desire is to convert the home to a two-family home so that she can reside in the residence and then rent out the other portion to, to another family. And that, that sounds great. I just, my, my bigger concern is just to ensure that it just doesn't result in another rooming home with more rooms and more opportunity for more tenants. The, you know, the, the circumstances which she claims to be pursuing, I think are admirable, admirable and great. I think, I think that would, that would be lovely. As long as that is the true usage and the, the current usage as a rooming home changes back to a residential home with one or more, or two units, in the spirit of the neighborhood. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, we are finished with comments, and so I'm going to close the public meeting, or hearing, and open the public meeting where only the Board will deliberate. So Ms. Chen, you may, and your son may absolutely have a seat again while the Board determines the course of action they're going to take.
Okay, thank you, thanks for your time.
Mr. Carrier? Sir?
Well, I, you know, I, it's, I guess I'm on the fence with this application. I mean, on, on, on one hand, you know, there are, what I see, about fifty percent of the homes in the area are double, you know, twin, multi, two-family, but about half touching on it are single-family. Nonetheless, this doesn't really, if it were a two-family, it doesn't appear to be out of character, the neighborhood. I guess one of the struggles I have is that White Street and Worcester Street are, are very thin. In fact, for all my years here, I've, I've avoided them, I almost feel like I'm in an alleyway. And I started using them more lately because ways routes me through there. And I'm like, well, that's interesting, I haven't gone this way, and, but it is a very tight street, they're more narrow than the others. I guess, another concern I have is, I, I don't think there's been a good track record of, of, I'm not sure, of maybe just the, the usage of the house, given, given what I saw when I was there and by the Butters' concerns. And I, I, if, if the variance were granted, you know, I, I guess I question whether the use would be more intent, intensive, but I could also make the argument that there probably won't be more quantity of people there if this were approved. If the Board were inclined to improve it, I think the stipulation on not parking on the corner and having the garage is, is absolutely necessary. And I guess I'd just like to hear other opinions.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
As Mr. Carrier stated, I mean, I think that this use would fit into the neighborhood, I think it would fit right in. I don't have any issue with that at all. The reason I asked about the garage was, was obviously on that side is where I think, Mr. Carrier knows, I noticed that there was incursions at a sidewalk or parking, or looked like could be, so I just want to make sure that there was two spots and it's available on either side. I think that, again, you know, we've seen this before, or, you know, we've seen that where sometimes we have some absentee landlords and, and we, you know, we don't. But I think in the end, there's no requirement for the landlord to live there. I think if the landlord's going to live there, that would be a net benefit, I think, because there's more, you know, we're more invested in the property. But without that saying, I don't think that if the landlord lived there or not lived there, it would change kind of how I'm looking at this. I did speak to Mr. Fock just to get some information on Worcester Street, because I didn't have access to email. And he did confirm, and I hope I'm not speaking out of term, Mr. Fock, but did confirm that there was a couple inspections that was done, but the latest inspection showed that this was not being used in the rooming, because that was really house, because that was my main concern in all of this. I do think that making a two-family would certainly improve that, that situation. We did, in the past, a couple of years ago, two, three years ago, approve similar condition on parking at the corner of Vine and Nevada Street. That was the corner unit where they were putting a basement apartment in. And we got confirmation that they would be using the garage as part of parking. My mechanic's right across the street, and I do notice people going out of the garage when I've been there. So that seems to be, you know, working fine. I, I think, again, it's just reinforcing that, this type of stipulation has been done before. So at this point, I take the concerns of the neighborhood of our street seriously. I think that to remedy, you know, obviously, the truck parked in the corner is, to me, a very quick and simple remedy, as a landlord can take, can remember that really quick. Again, the stipulation of not parking on the corner, I would be completely in favor of that. Again, we did the same thing at the corner of Vine in Nevada, where there was, they added cement to the curving to get up right on the corner, and that was one of the stipulations that they couldn't park there. Now, I've seen vehicles parked there sometimes, but it wasn't like it was before, so. So with that, I'm leaning in, in favor of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Mr. Shaw?
I guess I'm, I'm pretty much in support. I do appreciate and mostly concur with my colleagues' comments already. And my biggest concern is, is probably picked up on from my question, was just about doing something about definitively removing that corner of the property from any possible parking. I think as long as four parking spaces are provided, whether that is through the two driveways or the two driveways and the garage, I'm less concerned about the garage specifically being incited for parking, as long as the owner can assure that two cars can park in that, in each driveway. But I'm also okay with supporting, and since the applicant already noted, they were okay with maintaining the garage as a parking area, I'd be fine with that, you know, as a stipulation and, you know, approval if we're so inclined, so, but I am in support.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Minkara?
I, I do support the application. I think a two-family in this area is definitely reasonable use. It is an area, it does have single-family, but many two-families as well as multifamily, so I think it's definitely consistent. I can certainly appreciate the argument that given the size of the house, it is large, is challenging to maintain, and in particular, the fact that they are looking to make an investment in upgrading the home, because the systems are old, and, you know, needing to justify that in some way. So I think there's a net benefit in seeing the improvement of the home. I'm fine with the stipulation, so long as there's two parking spaces per residence, that's the requirement of, of the city, and I'm fine with that. I'd be fine with the stipulation, there's no parking on the corner, that's reasonable. You know, and I would just add, I mean, in, in my neighborhood, we have single-family, multifamily, two-family homes. The biggest, you know, problems in our neighborhood are the rooming houses, and those are, I, I do have a few of them in my median area. The problem with the rooming houses is, unlike a two-family, where typically, you have- The problem with the rooming houses is, unlike a two-family where typically you have a related family in each unit, they're tandem parking, but they can, they manage it. When you have multiple unrelated people living in one home, it's much more difficult to manage tandem parking. That's why people wind up parking in non-parking spaces like lawns or struggle and leave them on the street even though it's not allowed. So I think this would signify, you know, converting this to a two-family, I think, does upgrade the neighborhood and it does help alleviate the problems that are currently, you know, occurring on the property, or I should say are apparently occurring on the property.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lionel.
I, you know, sort of, on the face of it, I would generally support conversion of this house to a two-family. I note that the neighboring lots are even smaller and they have two-family homes on it. I guess I'm concerned by the, you know, a little bit of different representation on the application in terms of, you know, who's living there now and address and all of that. But I think that, I agree with Mr. Minkara that it could probably, the situation in general would probably be improved by making it a two-family to have two sets of residents there. Definitely the parking stipulation needs to be there. And with that, I probably would support this.
Thank you, sir. I, too, echo the same comments and concerns as my fellow board members. There's a home down the street from me where there's six individuals living in, and Mr. Minkara painted a perfect picture of parking all over the lawn and the street and causing issues. And I've seen people park up on the lawn because they can't park on the street. And so a stipulation there would be wonderful, also some kind of barrier, a hedge, a tree, a bush, a fence, anything, because a stipulation is fine and wonderful, but I asked Mr. Falk the question about parking on the lawn because technically that's not allowed now and could be ticketed. So a stipulation is wonderful, but a barrier is a little better. It helps, it aids the stipulation. So if that was the case, I would concur and I would support that, the application. Because a two-family and having the owner live there and having another family will certainly alleviate Mr. Guidi's concerns of so many cars and so much traffic and such safety concerns. So with that, would somebody care to make?
Ms. Boras.
No, she recused herself.
Oh, that's right, you're right.
Yeah, I was gonna state that, you know, that Ms. Boras did recuse herself from this case, which is why I was not omitting her. I was following her directive. And as to what Mr. Boucher brought up about the inspection and the last inspection saying, no, we didn't see the usage as a rooming house, and yet the neighbors, Mr. Guidi's conversation with the inspector garnered a different result. And so regardless, the applicant herself, the owner, did state that there were numerous people coming and going, so we do know that to be accurate. But, so thank you, Mr. Boucher, for, again, alerting and reminding the board. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Sharon Chen, owner of 10 Worcester Street, Sheet 35, Lot 79, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3 for a minimum land area, 29, 2,985 square feet existing, 6,970 square feet required to convert a single-family house into a two-family house in the RC Zone Ward 4. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property given the special conditions of the property and the benefits saw by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. Again, this is a, pretty much a mixed, mixed use in terms of two, the multifamily families and single families neighborhood. We find that this would, this conversion into a two-family would fit right into the existing neighborhood. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the audience. We find it would inadvertently affect property values surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest. We find that substantial justice will be served. And I'd add one special condition in respect to the corner of White and Worcester Street, the corner of the property, the lawn area, where there's been use of, use of the lawn's been relegated to parking. The stipulation's going to be that we're going to require that the landlord in some way, fashion, form places or constructs some type of barrier, it could be with landscaping, it could be within anything that will deter anybody from parking on, in that area. But again, the stipulation is basically saying that we're approving this application with specifically no parking on the corner of that property that's been used as parking. And with that, I make a motion, again, to approve the area variance.
Mr. Lionel, thank you for your second, sir.
So I purposely left the garage out because I didn't know whether or not, we just wanted to, you know, we kind of talked about it. It's got to be two cars, but unless, I'd be more than happy to add it as making sure that that's available for parking to make sure it's two cars or just leave it alone. I don't know what the will of the board is.
I was gonna ask for the will of the board. Mr. Carrier, I see you.
Well, my observation is that while there was testimony that you could put two cars side by side on the White Street asphalt, that's not my observation. I mean, maybe too many Coopers or a car and a motorcycle, but not two cars where people can get in and out of. So I still see the White Street as one parking spot if you're not on the sidewalk. The other concern I have is that if there's not a stipulation for the garage, garages become storage areas, they become trash areas, and then it, we're right back to where we were. And to me, given the history of the parking issues at this property, I could not support an application if there wasn't a stipulation for the garage to be maintained as an active parking spot for the tenant. That's where I'm at.
There's nothing else said, I'll be more than happy to amend.
Please, please, Mr. Boucher. I don't think, I think, no one objected to that, I saw heads going.
So I also make an amendment to the approval of the area variance, that there'll be a second stipulation, that the garage will be used for parking, that's to be available for parking in perpetuity. So basically, this is what will happen with the approval of this application. So again, the White Street side of the building, the driveway with the garage, the garage will be available for parking for this property, for the tenant on that is assigned that side of the building.
And Mr. Lionel, are you willing to?
Yeah, it's acceptable, yes.
Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Carrier, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor of the motion.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And Mary Ann McKay also votes in favor, so that is a unanimous five to zero decision by the board. Ms. Chen, you've been granted your variance, congratulations. Understand that anyone may challenge a decision by this board, they have up to 30 days to do so. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, please re-refer back to Mr. Falk or Ms. Borier in the planning department and make sure you're clear on the stipulations that were added to the variance acceptance. And thank you very much for your presentation. And I will now read the third case into the record, are we all good?
Yep.
Owner, Lucille M. Muiz, Vishva Corporation, oh my.
Pranav Kumar Patel.
Excuse me?
My name, Pranav Kumar.
Thank you, Patel, applicant. 106 West Hollis Street, Sheet 86, Lot 33, requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 52, to convert a medical supply business into a convenience store, RC Zone Ward 4. Thank you, Mr. Patel, for bailing me out on that. And if you both would please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Kivna Patel, I'm, he's my father, I would like to speak for him if that's okay with you guys? Yeah, thank you.
My name is Pranav Kumar Patel, we are resident 208 Lawrence State Gardner, Massachusetts.
Thank you. And now you may present your application, please.
So this place is a commercial place since it's open and it has enough parking. The previous owner used it for the medical business, is a retail business, and I like to open a convenience store in the same locations. So when I apply for the zone of planning and they says, right now it's considered under the RC Zone, so I have to come to you guys in front of to change the correct zoning.
So as far as I know, the medical supply store has been closed for a while now, and in regards of granting the requested variance will not be contrary to public interest because we hope that it will contribute to revitalization of the property and traditional commercial stripes in a dominating urban market. There's no reason to believe that this variance will harm members of the values, like the values of the community or the surrounding properties in any way. And there will be, it will observe the spirit of the ordinance because West Hollis Street is a very busy street, but the street, the store is on the corner, so Pier Street is less busy than West Hollis Street, and the parking lot to access the convenience store is on Pier Street. So we believe that there won't be too much of a heavy flow of traffic on the really busy street. And additionally, the parking, sorry, give me one second. And we have reason to believe that this will work because the previous property owner also had a retail property and he, like, they didn't have any issues with traffic, so we're assuming that our traffic flow will be about the same, so. And substantial justice would be done to the property owners, which are my father and my mother, because they would be able to contribute to the growing economy, like I said earlier, and while also giving back to the community. They intend to hire employees to run the business if granted permission, and so that would create job opportunities for the people around. And we do plan to renovate the property, we have plans already to renovate the property. I don't know if you guys have access to these forms, but we have received an estimate of about $27,000 with, including flooring, roofing, disposal, electric, carpentry, paint, sprinkler system. A lot of these things are out of code for now, and we do plan to renovate them and keep them up to code if we are able to create the business. And it should, the property will not diminish the values of surrounding properties because it'll, it might rather, it should actually add to the value of the neighborhood. The renovations mentioned earlier for the last question, along with extermination of the rhodan infestation that we have seen. And we do plan to clean around the property, there's lots of bushes and grown weeds around, and we will keep that up to date and nice and clean. We hope to add fencing around the property as well for separation and privacy for both us and our neighbors to the property. And our plans to bring this changes to the property are extremely serious, and we will implement them as soon as we get the correct permission necessary to do so. And finally, the special conditions exist such that literal enforcement of ordinance results in unnecessary hardship. The major concern, I assume, stands with opening a commercial business on 106 West Hollis Street is that there is a heavy influx of traffic, but since this is a convenience store, there shouldn't be longer than, I think the longest amount people are in there for five to 10 minutes, if anything, they grab it and they run. So people are gonna be there, the parking spots should be open for most of the day, it really doesn't get busy. We expect to have five to six parking spots, and we don't really expect to have five to six customers in the store at once. Secondly, there are like concerns about maybe delivery trucks or garbage pickup, and we plan to have deliveries and garbage pickups bi-weekly if not monthly. So I really don't see that being a large issue, and when there are deliveries or pickups, we do have enough space in the parking for them to quickly come and do what they need to and leave. And the restriction applied to the property by ordinance does not serve the purpose of the restriction in a fair and reasonable way, because our intended use for the property will not in any way harm the community or its members. And one strong reason to believe this is this property has already functioned as a retail place. So the only change being implemented now is the type of retail that is being done. That's it, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions? Mr. Carrier.
I just wonder if you could clarify for me, like, the parking spaces. Clearly, to me, there looked like there was one, maybe two, like, behind the store. So if you're on Pier Street, you'd make a 90-degree right and go in behind the store. There were some cars parked when I go by every now and then, like, beside the store, and I was struggling to think, well, if it's like full-in parking, it would seem to me that any car is gonna be across the sidewalk. If it's angle parking, you still have that problem. You could really only get a car in parallel to the street, if you know what I mean, and not block the sidewalk. So I was just wondering, you know, about pedestrians or folks walking down the sidewalk. I was just trying to, if you could help me understand how you, you know, would have that work. So.
Let me just understand one little bit, so you're talking about this area, right?
Need to be by the microphone, please.
You need to be in a microphone.
So this is a small cabin on the backside, and you're talking about this area?
Right, now that I see as a clear parking spot, right? But then I got wondering, like, maybe as you as the owner, are you planning on parking there, so then are the customers, where will they be parking?
The, all parking is on Pier, so all the parking is right in this way, is across. So it's like a six parking in this area.
So you're, because there's no stripes there, or is there a striped parking spots there?
There is, but it's very light right now, the paint stripe is almost gone, so when we really open the store, we're gonna put the paint lines right there.
So your proposal is angle parking?
Angle parking, it's still there, but it's very light, you can see it there.
Okay, all right.
You can see it in this image, there's a, there is one vehicle parked at an angle right by West Hollis Street.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? And Mr. Carrier hit on the question I myself had. If, will there be employees? And where will they park? And will that encroach into the five or six existing parking places?
So for the base, the employee is, this is the longest parking, so we're gonna start to park on the backside area, and this is all for the customer because it's easy in and out.
Okay. That answers that question. Is there anybody here present who would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none on Zoom, is there anybody on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of the application? I see a hand. But I can't see that, I can't make out.
Lucille Muiz.
Lucille?
She's the owner.
She's the owner. Well, I see her hand up.
Yeah, because she wants to speak.
Hello?
Lucille, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
I can, we can now.
Okay, my name is Renee Dufault, I'm actually Lucille's daughter, she's my mom, she's sitting right here with me. My father owned the company there for over 26 years and as a medical supply business, and I think it'll deem well as a. And I think it'll deem well as a, as a convenience store. And we support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? And is there anybody? I know we have something, but I was going to give physical people. Oh, there's another, I thought that was the same hand. And can you please give me your name? I can see your hand, but I can't make out the name.
Jason.
Jason Belcourt.
Jason, would you state your name and your address for the record?
Yes, it's Jason Belcourt, 109 West Hollis Street, and I'm here with my spouse, Eduardo Vargas.
And? Oh, he's in opposition.
Correct.
That's what I asked for.
You submitted a letter.
Um, you submitted the letter, do, but you're here, so state, if you want to state your comments, we, the full board did receive your email.
Okay, so, yeah, I just wanted to touch base on that, and I just wanted to add a couple more concerns based on the parking. So it was said that there's going to be six spaces available for the customers. I don't see that happening, and I've been here for 12 years. And actually, Tech Med, the medical supply store that was there previously, they were more of a delivery company. They got little traffic coming in, and they still had a parking problem. That's why they moved. And if you look on page 18, that was on the screen earlier, you can actually see one of the vehicles, the behind of the vehicle is into the street on Pier Street. There's a big parking situation there, and I can very see that if a convenience store comes there, there's going to be an overflow parking on the Pier Street that's already a narrow street. And it's also, Pier Street, I know the person who's buying, trying to open the store, is not familiar with the streets here, but Pier Street's also a pretty busy street because it's the first one-way street that brings you on to West Hollis to get to the highway after St. Joseph's Hospital. So Pier Street does get busy, and it's very narrow, and a convenience store there would just make it very congested and make it much worse. And you can see for yourself in page 18 that they just showed you, the picture of the car is hanging, you know, into the street. So they're very small, tight spaces, and I can just foresee a very huge problem with that. And not to mention the busy side of the street. So sometimes people will even make mistakes and go to turn up Pier Street. And can you imagine if there's a convenience store there? Like, it's just going to add more confusion to that, because people will try to get to the convenience store. And we're talking about buses and tractor trailers going 40 miles per hour. It's going to cause hazardous conditions. So those were some added concerns in addition to what I sent in my email.
Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
Mr. Patel, did you, have you seen this email?
So.
Can I email to you?
No, I haven't seen the email.
Thank you.
You did hear what Mr. Belcourt had to say. Do you have any response to his concerns?
So that's why.
No, you're going to have to speak into the microphone, please.
Can I put it there so you guys can see?
Just pull the microphone out and walk with it. There you go.
So this is a picture of the store, and there was a one car. When I took the picture, my car was parked on the backside, right here. This was the person, chairperson, not asking me. There's a six person, six cars right on the street. And anytime I go over there, there was another car parking from maybe the neighbor's cars or somebody else, because the building is not in use, so everybody else parked the car. I don't see any parking issue, and I, I'm not sure, but I think that Jason owned the two property on the both side of the building, and I think he's the guy, he's renting to people. So I think that was his interest of conflict or something. But personally, from my side, my point of view, I don't think there is enough space for the parking.
Keep the mic by you.
There's enough space for parking.
Can I make a comment on that?
Not yet.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things to say, sorry. So one, number four on the email, he said that closing of heavy metal doors late at night makes a lot of noise. You can see in the variance application, we're not open very late. The hours of operation go maximum until 9:00 PM, and then we'll be closed. And also, we have, in our experience, people don't really come that often after a certain hour, and past eight, seven or eight, business really goes to slowdown. So there shouldn't be much disruption with metal-heavy doors closing. We have a store already, and no metal-heavy doors close that loudly. It's very soft, closes softly. And number three, property values going down from neighborhoods being filled with litter. I don't see that happening personally. We're not going to sell things that people are going to litter. People, if anything, cigarettes, people smoke cigarettes regardless of whether or not there's a convenience store there. I, and there's not going to be littering from our end whatsoever. We will do everything to prevent that. We are going to place a trash can right outside the property to dispose of things that people have that they want to get rid of, and trash cans inside the property as well.
Yes. Mr. Carrier has a question.
You mentioned a store. Do you operate similar convenience stores now?
Yes, not here in Massachusetts.
Okay. And how long have you been operating convenience?
My father.
So we have one store from almost five years, and we have similar condition. In a Gardner, we have in a residence zone too, so I have to go with the variance for the same store too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now I can. Mr. Belcourt?
Yes.
You state, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, thank you. So basically, I just wanted to add that I don't have a conflict of interest. I do not own the buildings on the side of the property. I actually own the building across the street of the property, and I have eight parking spaces for myself and my tenants. And actually, two of them are empty right now. So there is no need for myself or my tenants to use that for parking. And like I said, I see the parking issue there all the time. I live right across the street. My office is in my house, and my window faces right to Tech Med, well, the former company, Tech Med. And I'm telling you, you can drive there yourself and go park in one of those spots. It's very tight in the back of your car. And we're not even talking with snow removal. We're just talking regular parking. Once you add the snow in there, it's much worse. So that's definitely a concern, and I would suggest people go try and park in there right now without the snow. You'll see that your car's going to hang in the street, and there's going to be big concerns for the garbage trucks and for any other kind of large vehicles.
Thank you. Does Mr. Carrier?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. And I, I can't tell you how many thousands of times I've driven by this. And it, it's nice to see, I'm just saying on behalf of the last testimony about, even though it's not germane to this application, the, this person has parking behind the house. Boy, wouldn't that be great if that was more common in the neighborhood? This fellow who just spoke here, Jason, it's, when I look at this map, I'm like, wow, that's, that's the way to do it. But it's not particularly germane to this application, but I just wanted to say that's, wouldn't it be great if there was parking like this for all the properties around here, anyway?
Yeah, unfortunate.
Mr. Mincara?
I'm not sure if now is appropriate, but I do have a question for the applicants.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you have a sense of how many, roughly the share of your potential customers that will be coming by car versus by foot from the neighborhood?
So I can go with this, my current store right now. Normally, we got 100 to 120 customers in a day. This was the normal average for the small convenience store, because we are not like a big franchise store, we like a small mom-and-pop store. So that's the average store customer we normally get.
My question was about how, what percentage of your customers do you expect to be walking from the surrounding neighborhood versus driving?
So the way that neighborhood is busy, and everywhere is a rental apartment close by it, I think is more people is walking, so I can say 30% is a walker compared to 70% is a car.
Thank you.
Thank you. With no, any further questions, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher?
I have a question for Mr. Park.
Certainly.
Just, just for the record, just so that everybody knows, is there a requirement for parking for this type of business in this neighborhood? Number of spaces?
Well, they used to be a convenience store, and a convenience store has parking requirements of, let me get to my code page, because I don't want to tell you off the top of my head. It would be 1 to 200.
1 to 200?
One parking space per 200 square feet of building space.
Okay.
And I'm not sure off the top of my head how many square feet it is. Hold on, let me just look at the application.
The first floor is 1705.
Okay, so it require nine?
Nine spots.
Roughly.
Okay. Thank you.
That's, that's, that's what the code required, but you know, you have to remember that this site was built probably prior to current zoning requirements. I mean, obviously, there's front yard setbacks, rear, well, front and side yard setbacks, and this building is probably built prior to our current zoning laws. So it's an existing, existing legally non-conforming building, as far as that goes.
So just to make some observations, I wasn't brought, I wasn't born and brought up in Nashville, but I moved here in, in the 80s. So I remember this business being busy, and I remember angle parking clearly as it was yesterday. And when I saw this, I always remembered the angle parking. And, and definitely, yes, sometimes in winters when the snow was really bad, it got tight there, but same with all the other streets going down. So, so that, so I just want to point out that there is definitely angle parking there, barring a snowstorm. And, and the only time that I got stuck on that street is when they were picking up trash, right? Because we just, you had to wait all the way down. And, and that was, that was it there. So I just make that observation, you know, from my experience of there. So I know that there's existing parking now. I'm assuming that because it had been used like that for all these years and never was removed, I'm just assuming that the city never really had an issue with it. So I'm just going to assume that in some form or fashion, there is, I'm going to assume that there is still enough parking there. So I, I guess that, that concern doesn't, it's not really, really high for me. Mr. Mincara brought up a real good point. I, I believe that, I'm just trying to think about what the closest convenience store is, but I think there's just definitely, what I see as kind of the positive part of this is that I, I can see where this is really kind of where somebody would walk to this, this convenience store. The applicant answered my question. This is not a chain type of a convenience store. They're not looking to have some, you know, certain amount of volume. They're not looking to be open 24 hours a day. So I, I really think that something like this fits in the neighborhood. And again, we know that there, in different parts of cities and different zones, but we know that there's some convenience stores that have no parking. You know, we can name, we can name them, you know, the best ones on Amherst Street, Cross and Fire Station, we know that one, right? So talk about a busy road, right? So I, I guess what I'm saying is that I, I, I'm leaning to support the application because of the special condition, it was an existing commercial operation. I believe that this is similar to having any other commercial operation go in there for what it's zoned for now, could have the same amount of, of traffic going in. I don't think that it's going to be the amount of traffic that we would see in like a 7-Eleven or something like that. So I, I think this works for the neighborhood. I think it would be a benefit to the neighborhood. I do understand and appreciate the neighbor across the street with what he's saying. All I can say is that I think there's a difficulty in getting onto both Kingsley Street and West Hollis Street on the, on the highway side. You know, I come here at night, and I try to take a ride on Kingsley Street at the Funeral Homes, and I can't even see traffic coming because of the parking. The cars, you can't see, and you're just, you know, looking for headlights. So I, I think it's a challenge, I think it's a challenge in that whole block. So I, I don't really look at that as something that would make me change my mind in, in supporting the application. So with that, I'll just leave it there for now.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I'm in support of the application for many of the same reasons that Mr. Boucher just went through. I think it's especially notable that, you know, this structure is basically built as a, you know, commercial type property, and the usage will, you know, remain relatively consistent with how it had been used. Also, you know, we've been talking about the six parking spaces that are alongside the building, but there appear to be for sure at least two, if not four, spaces available on essentially the back of the building, and those were the ones noted that would be used for employee parking. But I believe that they'll probably actually be satisfying the requirement of nine by actually being able to have 10 parking spaces on the property. So I don't even think, you know, even from a technical limitation, I don't think it's an issue. And I very much was, you know, thinking like Mr. Mincara, as far as, I think there will be a fairly high percentage of foot traffic. It's, you know, it's the nature of being more downtown, and that, you know, the, somewhat the convenience of going to the convenience store is actually not drive there, but to walk there. So overall, I, I am in support of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Mincara?
I also support the application, I think for the reasons stated. I mean, pretty clearly, it's a commercial use. I, I think the most recent, you know, use that was there, the medical supply was a really pretty distinct type of use, because realistically, and frankly, I thought it's been closed for years. I go by there, and I just don't see any activity. But realistically, I, I do appreciate the concerns of the butter across the street, but any viable use of this property is going to result in traffic, and it's going to result in people coming and going, and there will be some level of activity. I think that's just inevitable. And I don't think to say it couldn't be used for a viable commercial purpose is reasonable for, for, for the property. And I, I would just add that, yeah, there are other businesses in this neighborhood. I'm thinking, you know, Rollins on Kingsley Street, a few others where you've got this exact same condition of parking coming. This is just the way it is in this neighborhood. So I, I support the application for those reasons.
Thank you. Mr. La, oh, Ms. Boras?
I also support the application for the reasons stated.
Thank you. Mr. La, now?
I'm in, in support of the application. And I, there is a convenience, small convenience store in my neighborhood, and which, it, it has adequate parking, but I also noticed that there are supply trucks, like Coca-Cola trucks and beer trucks that sort of block, block some of the traffic for the short time they're there, but I don't think that's, I think that that's just not avoidable. I, I think that a convenience store would be a benefit to the neighborhood. I, I agree that it would get a substantial amount of foot traffic. I do think the usage will be more intense than the previous business, however many years it's been gone. But I think that overall, it would be a benefit, so I, I'm going to support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier?
I tell you, I was, from my sidewalk, I was hung up on the parking and then, you know, reading the butter's concerns that heightened that. But I do really appreciate Mr. Boucher's more experience there, because I haven't gone down this street, you know, at all. But in, in realizing that there But in, in realizing that there's been angle parking there for decades, I, 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 prior to hearing that, I felt, jeez, if this goes in, it's going to be creating an angle parking problem. But it's really a situation that's, that's been there for decades, and, and that does put my mind, you know, at ease on that. I mean, I, I think it's going to be tight, but as Mr. Mincara says, any viable business there is going to create an issue. And one other element I'd like to say that gives me some, you know, emphasis to support this is I, I do feel, I, I'm, I'm pleased that the applicant has, seemed, to me, seems to have experience in the store business. It's not like a first time. Because over the years, I've seen when somebody starts a business for a first time, there's a lot of surprises, things go wrong. I get the sense that the applicant can walk into this kind of like as a well-oiled machine and just get things going. And I get the sense that if this were approved, the applicant would, would tidy up the property and make it look better. And, you know, some years ago, there was an application before this board nearby for a laundromat, which was a, a big application, but it's, that is something that's functioned well, and it's a very engaged owner, and there hasn't been any problems, and I think it's picked up the neighborhood. So I'm, I'm going to support this, and I, I, I just hope that this in the end does the same, picks up the neighborhood.
Thank you. I too am in support. And Mr. Boucher, when you remarked about back in the day and the angle parking, I not only remembered this particular area, but I went right back to Main Street, downtown Nashua. We were all angle parking, and it was awesome. There were just those issues, but you got in and got out really, really easily. And you mentioned following a trash truck. Well, anybody can follow a trash truck on Pine Street today, and you're going to have to stop because you're not getting around them. That's just the way it is. I too live close to a convenience store. It's about a block and a half away, and it's the busiest little store. And yet, you maneuver and you move, the trucks come, the trucks go, and people just appreciate the convenience of being able to walk to it too. You proved the walkability piece of that. And so I too am in support of this application. And before I ask for a motion, I will just again say thank you, Mr. Boucher, for the walk down memory lane. Would somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Lucille Muse, and Viswa Corporation, Pranav Kumar Patel, applicant. 106 West Hollis Street, Sheet eighty-six, Lot thirty-three, requesting the use variance from Land Use Code, Section one ninety dash fifteen, Table fifteen dash one, number fifty-two, to convert a medical supply business into a convenience store, and this is in the RC zone. Variance is needed for the, to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits offered by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. I think of primary note, this property has had a longstanding commercial use, and this would be just a different commercial usage than, than what was there previously. It would be within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's no indications of negative effect on surrounding parcel property values. It's not contrary to public interest. Substantial justice would be served, and I move to approve this use variance.
And thank you, Mr. Boucher, for your second. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. Mr. Patel? Excuse me? Thank you. Yeah. You know, I grew up with a bunch of Polish names, and I still. But I want to congratulate you. Your variance has been granted. As we've stated throughout the evening, anyone has the opportunity to challenge any decision we make within thirty days. Should you have any questions, concerns, or comments, please re-refer back to either Mr. Fawcett or Ms. Poirier in the Planning Department. Thank you for presenting your application, and good luck. Thank you. Moving on, we have minutes. I got it. Okay, so they make that last. We have no motions for rehearing. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the agenda for the next meeting? And does anyone see any regional impact?
I do not.
Mr. Lionel does not. Mr. Courier?
No.
Mr. Boucher?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Mincara?
No.
Ms. Boras?
No.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, no. So there's no regional impact. The approval of the minutes from the January eleventh meeting. Has anyone, everyone had an opportunity to read them? Do you see any edits or corrections, comments? Or are they accurate as written?
Looks good to me.
Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Shaw?
I move to approve the minutes of, from the January eleventh zoning board meeting.
And I'm assuming Mr. Boucher, whose hand also went up, would be the second. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote, sir?
In favor.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier?
I vote in favor.
And Mr. Lionel.
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And Mary Ellen McKay also votes in favor. Seeing as, do we have any other business? No other business to come before the board? Eight twenty-nine. And Mr. Shaw, you making a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Mr. Courier seconded that. Mr. Mincara? Oh, we don't have the vote on it. Okay, we're all good. We're adjourned. Thank you.